Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the November 13th, 2017 City Council Legislative Session. I would ask that, would you please silence any electronic devices that make noise? If you have to take a call, we'd ask that you do it. Exit the chambers and take it in the hallway. If, for some unknown reason, an emergency should arise during the meeting, please exit the room, make a right-hand turn, go down the stairs. Should that exit be blocked, please make a left-hand turn, then a right, and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevators in case of emergency. If you need assistance, please ask, and we'd be happy to provide it to you. At this time, I'd like to call Pastor Courtland Cropper of Washington United Methodist Church to the podium for our invocation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're reading from Philippians, the fourth chapter, the ninth verse. "Whatever you have learned, or received, or heard from me, or seen in me, put into practice, and God of peace be with you." Integrity is the glue that holds our lives together. What do the young people see in us elders? They see integrity, honesty, truthfulness, and faith. What do they hate about us? And that's phoniness, hiv-rotas. And that is very important to us, that we go to church, that we read our Bible, and we say grace at the table. And it's okay to say grace in a restaurant. Let them see what we're doing, and what we would like them to do. A prayer for this evening: Take away the front, Father, for it is so often, it creeps into our lives. We would live a much better way, that the young people would be drawn to us also. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Appreciate it. Please stand now and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several presentations tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Let me start by just saying that we have a number of sort of proclamations that are done for an entire month. But, you know, the ones that I'm... The celebration that we're going to talk about tonight has importance throughout the year. We just take this moment to say thank you. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Salisbury. Whereas the city of Salisbury was incorporated in 1854, and Maryland is home to 156 other municipalities, and since 1993, Maryland cities and towns have celebrated Municipal Government Works Month each November in an effort to promote citizens' awareness of and interest in the government in their communities. And through school visits in their respective communities since then, cities and towns have educated over 27,000 students and their teachers about how municipal government works. Municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials. And municipalities have enhanced the quality of life of their respective residents by maintaining natural and historic sites and structures local to their cities and towns, making Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore. And in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the city of Salisbury is proud to promote municipal government awareness. Now, therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim November as Municipal Government Works Month in our city, and am joined by the Maryland Municipal League in promoting awareness and interest in our citizens, and the interest of our citizens in the city of Salisbury's local government. Now, that being said, what is this all about? Would the people who work for the city of Salisbury please stand up? It's about these people who give every single day for our community, who work day in and day out, sometimes weekends and nights and long hours, to make this city a great place. And so, I thank you, and I salute you. We thank you, and we salute you for all you do for our city. You know, we're really blessed with incredible people in our community, many of whom work for the city, but many of whom who have gone on to start incredible small businesses in our community, and we want to celebrate them too. So in advance of the upcoming holiday, I want to read this next proclamation. Whereas, the United States Small Business Administration reports, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States, representing 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, and responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the past 20 years. Small businesses employ 48% of the employees in the United States private sector, and on average, 33% of consumers' holiday shopping will be done at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants. And if you think that's a small amount of shopping, think about this: In the city of Salisbury, last year, we did $1.7 billion in retail shopping, just in this small city. 91% of all consumers believe that shopping small, at independently-owned restaurants and bars, is important. And 76% of all consumers plan to go to one or more small businesses as part of their holiday shopping. Salisbury, Maryland supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods. And advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving, a Small Business Saturday, as it will be in our community. Now, therefore, I, Jacob Day, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim November 25th, 2017, a Small Business Saturday in our city, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And the reason I'm doing this now, and not, you know, four days before, is to get you planning, start thinking about your holiday shopping, mark it down in your calendars, and be prepared to shop small and shop locally.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My wife is already planned. She's got the mark checked off. We also have a presentation from the Salisbury Skate Park, Phase Two, from the Skateboard Committee.
To me, I guess.
That would be...
So Phase Two got approved?
Could you come up to the podium and tell us who you are?
My name is Bobby Schaller, and I'm the Salisbury Skate Park Committee President. Phase Two got... Salisbury Skate Park has become a great asset for Salisbury. And right now, it's like 6,000 square feet of skatable space. So Phase Two is 4,000...
4,200?
4,200 square feet of skatable space additionally. And we're excited. So we, as a community, raised $5,000 to match the DNR funding, or the funding from community parks and playgrounds. It's been a long day. So we're presenting a check to whoever wants to take it. We also have a real check.
Debbie, why don't you come up too?
Yeah, I guess so. Yeah.
Do you want to use yours or ours?
Try with this one. The battery might die. Who would like to...
Yeah, and then let's get one in front of the council. Actually, can we do that?
Yeah.
Get the council members to stand.
Sure.
Does that work?
Well, thank you guys for expecting the phone.
Have a good night.
This guy's upside down.
We're good. We're not gods.
We can see the camera. We're up there. The checkers look more familiar.
She told me this way.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thanks for working.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give a round of applause to that group for raising $5,000. Another example of public-private partnership. On behalf of the council, thank you very much for that generous donation. We appreciate the work you do. So thank you. We have a presentation tonight from a community organization that's near and dear to my heart. It's the Disability Advisory Committee. And tonight, we have two members of that committee. We have Tim Mayer, who's the chairman, and we also have Amy Kraus. So if you'd come up to the podium.
Wow, what a great night to be here.
Good evening, Tim.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council, Mr. Mayor, Madam City Administrator, Madam City Clerk, city employees. That's a great recognition. I purchased a home in the city 30 years ago, so I greatly appreciate the incredible service that the city employees give to the residents of Salisbury. So I'll add my two cents of thank you and recognition of that as well. So yes, with me tonight, I don't know if there's any other members that have come in since the meeting started, but hopefully in your packets, Nancy Talbot is the appointed representative from the city for support services to the Disability Advisory Committee. And we had requested that she distribute the membership list of the Disability Advisory Committee to you all, so you can actually see who the members are that are represented that attend our monthly meetings, excuse me, quarterly meetings, there's too many meetings, quarterly meetings of the Disability Advisory Committee. So with me tonight is, I'll let her speak on her own behalf, so introduce yourself again.
Amy Kraus, I'm a program manager and rehabilitation instructor for Blind Industries and Services of Maryland.
Which is a great employer within the boundaries of the city of Salisbury, I'll add as well. So I wanted to just speak to you real briefly about the Disability Advisory Committee. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. It's actually been a goal of the members of the Disability Advisory Committee to actually come to you and to tell you that we exist. And part of that is, that may sound kind of, you know, kind of second-hand thought, but part of what we... One of our goals has been is to kind of make sure that within-house of the city, that all the departments are aware that we do exist. And so, we have met with several departments of the city, the Police Department, Public Works, Planning and Zoning, that have come and attended our meetings. Upcoming is going to be the Fire Department. They may or may not know that yet, but they're on board to be able to come soon. So that they're aware, when they deal with any member of the public with a disability, a little bit more about that kind of interaction. And so, that's kind of been part of our goal, and so thanks for letting us kind of meet one of our committee goals tonight, to make the members of the public, and also the members of the city council, aware that the Disability Advisory Committee exists. So what are we? The Disability Advisory Committee was created back in 1991 by Mayor Paul Martin. So that's how long this committee has been existing. It was created in response to the passage of the Americas with Disabilities Act at that time, implementing federal law that talked about accommodation for people with disabilities. And so, the city really took an assertive and a positive approach to say, not only is there a federal law, but in terms of implementing that law, and on a ongoing basis, in terms of acknowledging accommodation, accessibility, for persons with disabilities, to say, we would like to formalize that. And so, I've been fortunate enough to be a part of this group on and off for many years, and I've appreciated the support of all the partners, of agencies, and other residents who also are members of the committee. One of the greatest things is to, you know, really acknowledge that we are an advisory committee, and we advise basically the mayor and the administration on any issues that may come up related to a disability issue. And so, I'm going to have Amy kind of talk a little bit about some of the areas of what our concentration actually is, in terms of what we focus on.
So we look at things that are happening in the community, and how they could be impacted with people with disabilities. And so, sometimes that's just physical accessibility, curb cuts, and parking, and so, thinking about everything that's happening down the plaza, often on the plaza with students, and we're traveling and using crosswalks and those kinds of things. So anything like that that comes up, someone's not sure about how that would impact their community, or people they serve, or their constituents, it's a good place to come and kind of ask those questions, because it's... I deal primarily with the blind, and also with senior adults, but then there are other people on our committee who have more contact with different, more marginalized groups in our society. We want to make sure everyone is heard or understood, and so, it makes a good place to do that. So if you have any concerns, or anybody that you're thinking about a project, this would be one place to start. If we don't know, we'll find people who do. And so, that's just kind of a focus of what we want to do. We want you guys to know that we're here. These are really some talented and very... People who are working very hard with the group in our society, that we want to make sure feels included all the time. So, oh, you want me to say employment? At Blind Industries, we employ people who are blind. So if you have low vision, or you're visually impaired, or you're blind, and you think you cannot work, please come see us, because we will put you to work. It's fully competitive, unemployment, above minimum wage, vacation, medical, all that kind of stuff. Real jobs for real people in our community.
Thanks, Amy. Other areas of concern for us that we look at are housing, and transportation, accessibility for transportation, some education things. So we have representation from the Wycomico County Board of Education that deal with from a complete range of student issues in terms of accessibility. We have representation from Lower Shore Enterprises that are there in terms of looking at developmentally-disabled population, in terms of employment, in terms of accessibility, and things that are related to that as well. So there are other members that are also on the committee, but housing, employment, transportation, and accessibility, those were the three primary concentrations of where we look. So the administration has always been, had a open door, an open ear, and really very proactive in terms of looking for what we can do to better serve the disabled population. And I think I heard some other city employees that have also kind of previously have been involved in the Disability Advisory Committee. I think I heard Mr. Tom Stevens voice, so he was quite instrumental also in continuing to keep the Disability Advisory Committee going, and also Debbie Stamm in terms of some other kinds of community things that we have been involved with, and I think she previously also was the ADA Compliance Officer. And Nancy Talbot is in that current position now. So the city does have a designated Americas with Disabilities Compliance Officer, and that is fully responsible for making sure if there are any real formal complaints that come to the city about any kinds of issues, that that's the process that that would go to and take a look at. So in terms of accomplishments, obviously just not being here, we have linked with other partners in the community. The biggest one is the Crisis Intervention Training Team that deals with any particular person who's in a crisis, and those are from police, fire, the hospital. And so, we've kind of raised our profile to make them aware that we exist, and that to kind of know what they do in terms of dealing with, again, anybody from the disabled population, whether that's autism, a mental health issue, an addictions issue. So, you know, we've linked with them. One of the other linkages that we've accomplished this year as well is with the Wycomico County Health Department in a program that they have called Walk Wycomico. I don't know if people are aware of that, in terms of walking, and getting people out, and getting people walking, getting people healthy, and then when you're walking, to make sure that it is accessible. So those are two of the other kind of accomplishments that we've had for the year. So thank you very much for your attention, thanks for your time, and thank you very much for your kind support. And if any of the members of the council have any questions at any point, we'd be more than happy to answer them, and we have our next quarterly meeting in December. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim and Amy. I'd like to point out something. As Tim said, this committee was formed by Mayor Martin many moons ago. However, I will tell you that it was inactive for quite a period of time. And when I had the pleasure of being the CEO of Lower Shore Enterprises, we had a frequent guest, former Mayor Irtin, would come in and visit, and I give him credit for starting and initializing the rebirth of the committee. And I was, I had the pleasure of serving on that committee for a couple of years. I don't know how long ago that was, a while back. I think you still were young. But I want to thank Mr. Irtin for doing that, and see where it's come from that point under Tim's leadership. It's been really good, so thank you again. Appreciate it. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtin. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Irtin. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the October 16th, 2017 Work Session Minutes, the October 23rd, 2017 Regular Meeting Minutes, Resolution Number 2787, approving the appointment of Virginia Hossi to the Friends of Poplar Hill Mansion for term ending November 2020, Resolution Number 2788, approving the appointment of Alexander Pope to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for term ending November 2020, and Resolution Number 2789, approving the appointment of Jean Shreckengos to the, excuse me, to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for term ending November 2020. Resolution Number 2790, approving the reappointment of Reverend Dr. Thomas Tucker to the Ethics Commission for term ending November 2021. We have Resolution Number 2791, changing the resident agent to accept service or process of a government entity from M. Thomas Stevenson to Julia Glanz. And Resolution Number 2792, to purchase improved real property located at 531 West Isabella Street from Twilly Construction, Inc., for use by the Department of Field Operations. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols.
Thank you.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. If Virginia, Alexander, Jean, or Dr. Thomas Tucker is here, please stand.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your volunteering and making this very successful. We appreciate it very much. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the award of bids.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda. Good evening, Mrs. Miller. How are you?
Great, thank you. The first item this evening is the Change Order Number 7 to Contract 107-15. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Department of Infrastructure and Development to review and process Change Order Number 7 for Contract 107-15. That's the wastewater treatment plant, BNR ENR Upgrade. This change order totaled at $1,535,682, addresses 13 miscellaneous proposed change orders. The majority of the cost, about $1 million, a little over that, is due to the additional media removal and remediation of the anoxic tanks. A synopsis of the work specified in Change Order Number 7 is included in the attached departmental memo, along with several photos documenting the interior conditions of the anoxic tanks before and after the removal, or media removal. These change orders have been thoroughly vetted by the city's construction administrator, GHD Incorporated, and by city staff. Funds are available in the accounts noted in your packet. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval to process Change Order Number 7, as noted above, to Ullman Shooty Construction in the amount of $1,535,682. Upon council's approval, the Department of Infrastructure and Development will present the change order to the Maryland Department of the Environment for approval.
Any questions? Okay.
Okay. The next item this evening is an award of bid. The Department of Procurement received a request from the Salisbury Police Department to purchase seven 2018 Ford Police Interceptor Utility All-Wheel Drive Vehicles. In lieu of competitive bidding issued by the city of Salisbury, we respectfully seek council's approval to award a piggyback contract. This type of contract is a form of intergovernmental cooperative purchasing, in which an entity, in this case, the city of Salisbury, will be extended the same or lower pricing in terms of a contract entered into by another entity, in this case, the state of Maryland. Contract Number BPO 001B8400177, issued by the state of Maryland by virtue of a public competitive bidding process, was awarded on October 2nd, 2017, and is valid through September 30th, 2018. This contract was awarded to Hertrick Fleet Services in response to the solicitation for Maryland statewide 2018 vans and SUV vehicles, vehicles types 9 through 18. This contract specifically allows governmental agencies within the state to purchase materials, supplies, and equipment under this contract. Per Section SC16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding, Exceptions of the City of Salisbury Charter, competitive bidding procedures performed by the city of Salisbury are not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstance: contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract. This charter designation, therefore, allows the city of Salisbury to purchase the items awarded on the state of Maryland contract noted above. The Department of Procurement has obtained a copy of the state of Maryland contract, and has confirmed its validity, and that the prices quoted by Hertrick Fleet Services do not exceed the state of Maryland contract prices. The city intends to purchase seven vehicles and 10 factory-installed options. Eight of the 10 options are not on the statewide contract. However, it would be impractical and more costly to obtain these specific options from aftermarket sources, and in some cases, may void the manufacturer warranty. I did note in your packet the cost per vehicle, the contract options, the non-contract options, for a total delivered cost per vehicle of $29,972, making the total amount for seven vehicles $209,804. The delivery lead time for the vehicles is approximately 14 to 16 weeks. Upon receipt, the vehicles will then be sent for upfitting of additional equipment necessary to fully outfit a police vehicle for duty. There are sufficient funds in the account noted in your packet to purchase the noted vehicles. The Department of Procurement requests council's approval to award Contract 104-18 to Hertrick Fleet Services in the amount of $209,804.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to... Well, before I start, did the gentleman... Did we have copies of the amended for the audience?
No, we don't.
We don't? Okay.
We distributed them.
We distributed them.
You distributed them? So they have copies?
Okay.
Okay. Good.
We've got 15 copies.
So do we. Does that change any of the requests for, the reason I'm saying that, I'm trying to see who's going to, so everybody still wants to speak? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2460.
So moved.
Second. Ms. Jackson, Mr. Boda.
Okay, this is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury amending chapter 15.27, Property Maintenance Chronic Nuisance Property to exempt certain police calls. This has previously been read at its entirety. We just focus on the changes here.
Focus on the changes, please.
The primary changes beginning on line 31 are that what's happening here is that police calls as well as chronic nuisance events are being defined under certain circumstances as a call for service. And it just goes through and identifies the following calls shall be excluded as calls for service, and that would be a domestic disturbance, a domestic assault, a domestic escort, ex parte service, crime against family and child, assault on a child, and child abuse report, an emergency petition, a sexual assault, offense, a mental subject, a suicide, and suicide attempt, an overdose, a temporary vacant dwelling check, a welfare check, a drug court home visit, a probation and parole home visit, crisis intervention home visit, routine warrant service, a use of an address simply for location reference in any incident when the resident, the location, is a victim of a crime, so as not to discourage calls for assistance based on a totality of the circumstances. So, basically then, although some police calls will be defined, that was a list that will be excluded. Under the definition of chronic nuisance property, we talked about that how many calls for services would be generated. There was previously discussion of increasing that to seven. In this version that was presented today, it would remain at five calls for service. And the next change, which is the reason that the seven did not go into effect, was that there is now an exclusion for nuisance violations, which means one of the following: parking in the front yard, abandoned and operable or untagged vehicle, rubbish, tall grass, weeds in the sidewalks, abandoned property in the yard, sidewalk or street, graffiti, dead trees, tree trimming, trash receptacles, or failure to remove snow from sidewalks. Notice of one of these violations will not count as a call for service unless a municipal infraction is issued or the violation requires abatement by the city. All other code violations shall count as a call for service. So again, these are exceptions to that definition of call for service in those circumstances. And the, let's see, the rest of it is pretty much the same as before at the time of the first reading, which was done. If you'll manage to address any of them, I'll be happy to. Oh, I'm sorry, there is one more addition down here. I checked the highlighted G. Subsection G at line 130 says, "The city shall notify a property owner after the property has incurred four calls for service in a calendar year. Notice will be made by mailing a letter to the owner's address of record or posting the notice at the property." So this means the owner of the property will receive notice after the fourth official call for service, and the fifth would be the one that would then bring action against the owner. So they, again, a last chance opportunity to correct the issue before. It's designated as such.
And there was one removal of the word if?
Yeah, when I just read it in line 59, I omitted the word if at the end of that line. It's just unnecessary.
Great. We have a, well, let's get a motion to amend first.
I'll make a motion to amend for his reading.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Ms. Jackson, second. Okay, we have requests for comment, a couple of comments. If we would please keep them to about three minutes, that'd be great. If you are going to say, as we did last time, if you're going to say the same thing, just say, "I agree." And if there's anything to add, then you may add it at that time. So, first up is Brett Hopkins. Brett, come on up.
Brett Hopkins, Sappoa President, 925 Eastern Shore Drive. Since we just have it, just received it, I'll just run down what I quickly saw. On line 34, it says, "Notice, issuance of notice of violation, comma, corrective action letter, or municipal infraction citation." Is it possible to remove notice of violation, comma, corrective action letter, and leave in municipal infraction? I think that's what we're trying to go for is the C observes something, notifies the property owner, we take action and remedy the notice, whatever it is. If we don't remedy it, then there's a citation given, and that would then be the count that goes up. It's the number of citations we get, not the amount of letters that are written against a property. So I think if we took out notice of violation, comma, corrective action letter, then we're left with citations. And that's what I think we're going for. Okay, let me just keep going. I think in line 48, it should be calendar year, not 12-month period, and that calendar year would tie out to at least two other references, namely line 131, which calls calendar year. If we could add somewhere in block 55 to 61 siding, molding, and mildew letter, because all houses in Salisbury would probably get one or two of those a year, then that should be just a nuisance violation. Line 130, where it calls out, "Has incurred four calls," I think we should back that up to three calls, because by the time you get notified of the fourth, one PD call that same day you got a letter would trip it to five events, and then we're in trouble.
Say that one more time.
Line 130, where it says, "The city will notify the property owner on the fourth event," there's no margin for error at that point. It'd be nice if the city could notify us of the third event, on the third event, so then we have at least a day or two to fix whatever's going on before we hit that fifth event, because the fifth event creates the problem. Then we, now we're in front of you guys or a court or something trying to get our license back, or keep our license. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Brett.
Can I?
Sure.
Can I just, real quick, on the first point, line 34, notice of violation corrective action letter, in this, because of the exclusions written into lines 55 to 61, would only refer to non-nuance violations. So it would only refer to like major violations, like a building code violation, an overoccupancy, not a nuisance violation. So that exclusion language from 55 to 61 responds to exactly what you're saying there.
Can we add molding, mildew, though? Or consider that?
I would say that is a nuisance violation, it's just an oversight, yes. And then 48, calendar year, that was my recollection, too. And then 130, I have no preference. I guess I would just ask, how many letters does that mean? We're going to be right. I don't know. But we can look into that and figure out.
Well, I think when we discussed the fourth, like the, sending the letter on the fourth, we were still at seven.
Yeah. So we have to go back on it.
That was, I think, what we were.
Yeah, we need to go back.
Yeah. Where it's kind of like a halfway point.
Because we said seven, and then we said.
We just got all of it.
Three.
Yeah.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Could we table this till the next?
Yeah. It would be nice to, this is going through so many iterations, and we are changing them on the fly here at the table.
I don't think, yeah, and I, I.
I also have questions about the domestic disturbance and those calls coming out, given the fact that six of our seven homicides so far this year are domestic related. I do have, I'd like to have the housing official walk through lines 55 and 61 for me and explain to me how it's different if they get it and then get it fixed, and then they get it again, and they get it fixed, and simply, aren't you supposed to be getting these things because these things are happening on your property? And that means the same thing can happen again and again and again. So, and this has been a while, and this has been changed in class, so I agree wholeheartedly, Mr. Council President, this should go back.
And I have, the overdose, I feel like if there's an overdose there, then there's something going on at that residence that's causing the overdose, so I feel like that should not be on.
And in the end, I think what the council is saying is.
It should be exclusion.
I think, let me just stop everybody.
It should be here.
Do you want us to have our things ready for next time?
This is not the venue to do the discussions that we're attempting to have. We need to bring this back to the session, do it appropriately, because this should have never come tonight. So, do I have a motion to table?
I have a motion to table, Mr. Council President.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have to withdraw the amendment and the motion, or can we just table?
Just table.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to table. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2463 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Ierton, Mr. Boda.
Okay, this is the bond ordinance, which I read the entire title of last time, and I'll skip it this time if, Mr. President. The amount, the bond issuance is $5,724,853. The details of the projects for which it's to be applied appear on page five in a chart, and this has all been drafted and prepared by our bond counsel.
Any questions? Hearing now, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2463, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2464 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda, Ms. Jackson.
For the benefit of our president, I could read this again, but.
No, this one, this one is a definite no.
Ordinance number 246, okay. 2464, an ordinance to the city of Salisbury to amend chapter 605, Urban Chickens of the Salisbury City Code to add provisions related to urban ducks and authorize the keeping of ducks subject to certain regulations. Basically takes the urban chickens ordinance, adds the word ducks, prohibits drakes, and establishes duck houses. That's it. Mr. President, the only person that really hasn't weighed in on this is the chief of police. I just wonder if she has any concerns about the duck ordinance at all. Knowing how close she lives to the water, I, no.
Okay.
I withdraw the question. Thank you.
Since there are no other questions, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2464 for the second reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Yeah, the more apt question was, the proponent of the ordinance is a neighbor of the chief's.
Okay, I'll make a note of that. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2465 for the second reading.
So moved.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Ierton.
Okay, this, ordinance number 2465 is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury approving the designation of 16 parking spaces on East Market Street as Lot 20 for permit parking. And again, this was read previously, this is the second reading, there's a diagram showing the location and numbers of each of the parking spaces that would be created by this ordinance.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2465, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2466 for the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Okay, this is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury amending Title V Business Licenses and Regulations of the Salisbury Municipal Code in Chapter 5.32, Mobile Vendors in Chapter 5.34, Door-to-Door Solicitors, to add a background check investigation fee for each background check performed. Again, this was read previously, the amount of the fee will be $40 per individual, and that will appear in both sections of the code.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2466, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2467 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ierton, Mr. Boda.
Okay, this is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury approving an amendment of the FY 2018 General Fund Budget to appropriate funding to the Business Development Marketing Fund, whereas the city has sold $925.48 worth of merchandise at the newly-created downtown Salisbury Visitor Center as of October 18th, 2017, and whereas the city would like to return those funds to the Downtown Visitor Center Marketing Count on a regular basis to reinvest in merchandise to ensure the visitor center has a healthy stock of merchandise. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, the city fiscal year 2018 General Fund Budget be and is hereby amended as follows: increased general fund merchandise sold fund 01, excuse me, 0010, 01000434717 by $925.48 and an increase in the account 11600-555512 marketing by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2467, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2468 for the first reading.
So moved.
Mr. Ierton, Ms. Jackson.
Okay, this is an ordinance to the city of Salisbury to amend the language of chapter 12.10, Snow and Ice Removal of the Salisbury Municipal Code to prohibit snow being moved into the public streets, whereas the ongoing application administration enforcement of the Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates the need for periodic review, evaluation, amendment, and whereas the Salisbury Municipal Code, Section 12.10, currently requires property owners of any land or premises within the city to remove any snow or ice from sidewalks within 24 hours following a snow or ice event, and whereas there have been occurrences of snow or ice being shoveled, plowed, or dumped onto public streets thereby creating hazardous travel, and whereas the city seeks to add language to prohibit the dumping of snow or ice onto public streets, and whereas the director of field operations desires this change to more effectively maintain the city streets, now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of Salisbury, Maryland, that chapter 12.10 be amended as follows. I'm not going to read what's already in the code, I just bring to your attention line 28, the, we're putting a removal of snow and ice and taking out the reference to the sidewalks in that line. Beginning line 50, we're adding the paragraph D, "No property owner, person, or commercial entity other than an employee of the city of Salisbury or an individual acting within the express written permission of the city of Salisbury shall pile, plow, push, or dump any ice, snow, or debris onto a public street." The next change is in 12.10.020, under 6A, we're just making reference there to make it clear that the $50 fine will apply to violations of A, B, or C. And then we're adding a subsection 6B that says, "Any property owner, person, or commercial entity found to be in violation of Section 12.10.010D shall be guilty of a municipal infraction and fined $250 for the initial offense and $500 for each subsequent offense." The effect of this is that if you throw your ice and snow in the street, you're going to get a much bigger fine than you would if you failed to just scrape your walk. Yes. Then the next change is line 83, Section 12.10.035, Violation of Dumping Snow, Ice, or Debris Onto a Public Street, and it says, "Any property owner, person, or commercial entity that violates Section 12.10.010D of this chapter shall be guilty of a municipal infraction and fined $250 for the first offense. Each subsequent offense shall be assessed." $250 for the first offense; each subsequent offense shall be assessed a fine of $500." The reason it looks like we're putting this language in twice, but the first time it's identifying what must be in the notice, the second time it's actually making it the appropriate fine. And that's it.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2468, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number 2469 for the first reading.
Some moved.
Mr. Irtin?
Second.
Mr. Boda?
Okay, this is an ordinance to the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of FY 2018 General Fund Budget to appropriate insurance proceeds received in FY 18 to 8 in the purchase of a new vehicle for the police fleet, whereas the Salisbury Police Animal Control Unit, AC2, a 2009 Ford F-150 King Cab, I'll skip the VIN number, was involved in a motor vehicle accident and deemed a total loss, and whereas the animal control vehicle, AC2, is valued at $11,650, and the insurance payout to the City of Salisbury was $10,650 after the deductible, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department is requesting the insurance adjustment for AC2 in the amount of $10,650 be placed in the Salisbury Police Department Police Services Vehicle Account 21021-577025, and whereas the replacement of the animal control vehicle will allow the Salisbury Police Department to maintain a sufficient number of animal control vehicles to effectively patrol all areas of the city, and whereas the Salisbury Police Department will utilize the funds appropriated from the insurance adjustment along with other surplus funds to purchase a new animal control vehicle, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the City's Fiscal Year 2018 General Fund Budget be and is hereby amended as follows: Paragraph 1, Increase Insurance Proceeds Account 01000-456935 by $10,650, and Paragraph 2, Increase the Police Department Budget by an equivalent amount.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2469, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number 2470 for the first reading.
Some moved.
Mr. Boda, Mr. Irtin.
It's an ordinance to the City of Salisbury amending Chapter 15.2 for Housing Standards, Article 10 Means of Appeal and Article 11, excuse me, Article 6, Chapter 17.12, Board of Zoning Appeals, to allow for a request for waiver of appeal fees, whereas there is a fee of $100 for any person that wishes to appeal a decision of the city, and whereas the Maryland City Council wished to ensure that all residents of the city are able to appeal decisions of the city officials regardless of the ability to pay the appeal fee, and whereas the Housing and Community Development Department does recommend approval of these proposed code changes, now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the City Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that Chapters 15.24 and 17.12 be amended by adding new sections as follows: Under Chapter 15.24 Housing Standards, there's a Section 15.24.391, Request for Waiver of Fee. Person unable by reason of poverty to pay the appeal fee may appeal and request a waiver of the fee. This provision shall apply to an appeal within the City of Salisbury. This shall not apply to an appeal of a municipal infraction, municipal -- we got two words there twice, I'm sorry about that, didn't just notice that. It, well, does not apply to an appeal of a municipal infraction, an appeal to the District Court, and an appeal to any court or agency outside of the jurisdiction of the City of Salisbury. And then, beginning on line 27, Subparagraph A, "Any person wishing to request a waiver of the appeal fee may submit a completed request for waiver of fee form from their application for appeal." Subparagraph B, "The Board of Appeals shall review any request for waiver of fee forms that are submitted and may require the person submitting the request to supplement or explain any of the matters set forth in the request." Subparagraph C, "In determining whether to grant a waiver, the Board shall consider: One, whether the person requesting the fee waiver is receiving services from a state or federal program serving low-income individuals; Two, whether the individual income is equal to or less than that which would qualify for one of the low-income programs in Paragraph C, one of this chapter; and Three, whether there is any other factor that may be relevant to the person's ability to pay the fee. D, upon notification of the request for waiver being denied, the person appealing shall have 10 days to pay the appeal fee. Paragraph 1, if paid within that time, the application for appeal shall be deemed to have been filed on the date the application for appeal and request for waiver forms were filed; and Two, if the fees are not paid within that time, the application for appeal shall be deemed to have been withdrawn. Subparagraph E, if the request for waiver is approved, the appeal shall proceed as though the fee had been paid. F, if the appeal fee is waived and the appeal is denied, the appeal fee, the appeal fee shall be due, unless a request for waiver of final fee is submitted within 10 days of the notice of decision and approved. And then Subparagraph G, if the appeal is waived and the appeal is successful, the individual shall owe nothing." Then, under the Board of Zoning Appeals, it's basically a repeat of the same thing, making that same thing available.
Yeah.
At the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2470, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Before we proceed any further, I saw that our delegate, Carl Anderton, has snuck into the room.
If we could, Mr. Council President, say thank you to Delegate Anderton for receiving our letter in support of a new bookmobile for the Wycomico County Public Library. All of his colleagues also received the letter, and we look forward to the delegate letting us know when he needs us in Annapolis to come forth and testify to the appropriate committee as to the need for that for the library. So thank you, Delegate Anderton, and to all the council members and the mayor who signed the letter.
Good. Any other questions or public comment?
No.
Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.